Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and yes, Kaylee? To call the roll, please.
Here.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Maringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwal.
Here.
Mayor Seadmas.
Here. So our pastor, who was scheduled to be here, is not here tonight. So I will give the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with the pledge of allegiance. Father, we are so grateful for such a beautiful day, for these seasons, for a beautiful place to live, for a country where we have such freedom. We thank you for that. Thank you for everybody who works for the city of Granville, the people who put their lives on the line, like our police and fire folks. And we thank you for them and the dedication that they have. We thank you for all of our volunteers and everybody who works in City Hall and all the other departments and department heads. Thank you. We know that you see things from the very beginning to the very end. You have a plan and a purpose for each one of us, and we thank you for that. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. I just, before I ask for approval of that agenda, maybe just one slight adjustment, and that's at the very end. We're going to go into a closed session to talk about the Police Department Supervisor Unit Collective Bargaining. I'd like to have the council member comments before that. So everybody in the audience can hear those. So with that minor adjustment, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Motion and motion by Randy or...
By Josh.
And support by Randy? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay, great. We also have our minutes from the July 22 meeting, 22 meeting, three weeks ago. And you had a chance to look at that. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Motion from Josh?
Support.
And support by Lynn? Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out on those? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. All right. Presentation of bills, probably the biggest amount we've ever had, lots going on today.
There is a lot going on. So I, hopefully, no one's too sticker shocked. We can definitely talk through some of the big amounts we have. Just as a friendly reminder, we have this meeting's bills broken out between old fiscal year and new fiscal year. There will be one more packet of bills like this at the second meeting in the month of August. That will be wrapping up our 60-day period of ending the books for fiscal year '23, '24. Want to first take your attention to the old fiscal year bills in the amount of $1.2 million. Couple bills want to highlight, probably start with the big one that I think is contributing to such a large amount this month in the amount of $918,000 to Reeve Riley Construction. This was for all of the paving that was done in town over the last several months. A lot of those overlays and different projects that we've seen throughout the community. So again, that bill, just shy of $1 million. I mean, we're really seeing the amount of work that was done to address some of those road projects. Also want to highlight the bill in the amount of $227,000 from Kaminga and Ruuzvoots, Inc. That has to do with the Ivan Rest Water Main Project. We'll see another one of those bills when we get to the new fiscal year here shortly. And lastly, just want to draw your attention to the bill in the amount of $2,800, much smaller than the others, but that's from the Michigan Municipal League. That was the executive search fee cost for the city manager search over the last several months. So just wanted to make sure you all saw that in there. I think that will kind of formally wrap up that whole process. Happy to answer any questions there may be for the old fiscal year bills.
Okay. Any questions for Griffin? Okay, is there a motion otherwise to approve the bills for the old fiscal year in the amount of $1,231,278.72?
So move.
Motion by Tim?
Support.
Support by JR. Any other comments or questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Mayor Mas?
Yes. All right. The new fiscal year bills, just over $1 million. Griffin?
Yes, thank you. There's one I'd like to highlight in the pre-written checks, and that's in the amount of $109,000. You can see that's almost the entire amount of the pre-written checks to a company called Mesa. That is the standard health insurance premium payment that we're making every month. So again, just want to make sure we're seeing what the bulk of those pre-written checks are. And then when you move to the rest, I want to point out a couple here, one from Compass Minerals America in the amount of $70,000. This is our first big payment of the year for our bulk road salt that we use every winter. Dyke House Construction, Inc. in the amount of almost $260,000. This is another one of those fire station project installment payments that we've been making regularly as the project progresses. There is Concrete Construction, Inc. in the amount of just short of $60,000. This is part of our annual non-motorized infrastructure investment that the community makes each year. My understanding is this one was specifically for some sidewalk work that has been being done. And then lastly, we'll point out the other Kaminga and Ruuzvoots, Inc. in the amount of $143,000. That is another payment on the Ivan Rest Water Main Project. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the other bills, or we can pull them out if you also choose. But other than that, there was a lot of work that's been done over the last couple of months. So obviously now we're doing some catch-up when it comes to the payments on those projects.
I think at the last meeting I said, someone had mentioned to me, is there anything that hasn't been paid? And Grandma, I'm like, yeah, that's good, right? We're happy.
It's a good problem to have.
It's a good problem. All right. Any questions for Griffin on the bills for the new fiscal year? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills on the new fiscal year in the amount of $1,051,374.62?
So move.
Motion by JR and support by Kim. Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
Mayor Mas?
Yes. Well, tonight, we are so glad to have with us our state rep, Carol Granville, and who's going to talk about the budget. State budget.
It's just an evening of money.
Yeah, right. So what's... What's going on on Lansing?
Oh, you know, not a lot right now. We're in our interested work period, so, you know, we're all, we're all in our districts doing the thing. What they'd like to say, this is the time of year we're joining our chat interviews. That said, though, they're actually a little bit still not on Lansing. But I'll try to give you an overview here of, you know, where we are. So if you want to go to the next slide, please. Is it Kaylee? Do you feel like you're following?
Yeah, that's right.
So just to spend a little while, and I apologize, I was thinking about that. I'm like, I really want to make an effort to try to get in maybe once a quarter or something like that. So if there's anything in what I talk about today that is of interest to you or other things that you hear going on at the state level, of course, you're always welcome to contact my office, but I would be happy to come back to a city commission meeting to talk about, you know, a little bit more depth, any of these issues or others that are of particular concern for the city. My roles in the House, I am on the leadership team, I'm the Associate Speaker pro tem, which means I'm third in line for the gavel. And so that's kind of fun. I get to sometimes, you know, stand up in front of the room and run the whole show. So that's really a privilege, and it's so, just really powerful to see that whole room, you know, from the front looking out. So appreciate that opportunity to elevate our voices and things. In my regular committee work, I chair higher ed. I am also on the K-12 Policy Committee, Health Policy and Family, Children and Seniors. So there's quite a bit of overlap in the work that I do, which, you know, if you know my background, comes as no surprise. So I'm really pleased to be in the role that I am with higher education and education in general. I am also on a national task force for higher education. And so we get to, so we're working towards, you know, all of the things that are relevant across the nation in terms of affordability, transfer credits, shifting, like how we're getting kids into college successfully, persists, and it's all of those things. And then I'm also on a Midwest higher ed regional compact team. So those are a couple of areas where I get to really focus on. And just finished up a task force on dual enrollment and starting on a task force here in the state for special education. So I'm doing, I mean, that's obviously my priority, you know, in the House. But again, health policy, family, children and seniors, we're doing a lot of work with, in health policy, just, you know, across the board. There are so many issues in health policy, but we've been focusing a lot on some maternal healthcare items, things like making sure that women have access to, for example, a blood pressure monitor. So they don't have to go to the doctor or they don't have to go to a mayor. You know, if you are pregnant, you will have access to a blood pressure monitor that you can kind of, you know, check on yourself if you are so concerned or you need to be doing that, things like that. So some of those simple things that will really help improve. We have one of the highest maternal mortality rates, so looking at ways that we can, isn't that surprising?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just really looking at ways that we can do better here in the state. Lead line service stuff, we continue to work in that area. We've done some water, one of our newer bills. As we do with filtered water in schools and daycares so that our kiddos are getting, you know, fresh, clean water to drink at school and in our daycare centers. So those are some of the things we're doing in health policy. Family, children and seniors, we've really worked a lot around on the senior side in expanding the state BUDS program so that seniors have a lot more support in the things they might need support in legally. And we've also revamped our guardianship and conservatorship rules or laws, policies. Up until recently, you know, it would be a court-appointed guardian. Even if you had chosen one of your children to be your guardian, a court could step in and say, no, and put a stranger in charge of all your things. So we're looking to really help clean up, you know, any, you know, with the issues that we have there. And with children and families, doing a lot of work around foster care, again, looking at kinship care. So kids who, you know, if you've got that favorite neighbor or favorite aunt and uncle or whoever that might be, they could pretend, they could be in line first for care as a foster family, even if they aren't registered as a foster family, they would be able to take guardianship, and then the state would help them work towards that. But the idea here is really just keep our kids in the best, closest place for them. And we've also been working on some education things for them. Surprisingly, or maybe not, they really struggle with how foster children, as they go from home to home, district to district, often their educational records are just a mess if they're kept up with very well at all. And so we are looking at, we've now created a state sort of registrar who will track those transcripts, those kids aren't taking classes, they're graduating on time, you know, things like that. And we've done some, some technical laws around vulnerable adults. So protecting adults from being, you know, victimized by predators online, things like that. They particularly are vulnerable adults because they weren't carved out. So we didn't have any protections in place for them in particular, which is really important. So it's kind of a broad overview. There's obviously a lot going on in all of those committees, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but we can move on to the budget. So state budget, the top two, I think, are probably of the most interest to you here as city leaders. We now have a revenue-sharing trust fund that will guarantee that you're getting your revenue sharing. So really excited. I am part of the municipal caucus, I think that's what we call ourselves. But it's all the bipartisan group of legislators, Senate and House, who have served in local government. And there's quite a few of us now. And so we are able to have a good, strong voice in advocating for what is most important at the local level. And so we were able to create this revenue-sharing trust fund and make a deal with the government on it to be successful there and equally to a public safety trust fund. So again, money that is being set aside to support public safety. So as those details come out, I'm happy to share or come back and give you more information and things. But I'm excited what that means for some stability and funding for our municipalities. And we've got, we allocated about $17 million for water infrastructure projects, which again, some of that would be like the lead line cleanup. Also, I heard you talking about water mains, quite a bit there. And I know we have a water infrastructure project we need to be thinking about in Granville. Tried to get that into the budget this year, it didn't happen. But looking for additional ways to help. On that, I've talked to the new director, Eagle, a little bit. I need to sit down with him again and lay out the case a little bit more, you know, in detail. But hoping we can help out with that flooding that's going on in the business district down there by the river. One of the big pieces is that for years, Eagle has not been able to, there's the rules that were in place for, Eagle did not allow for changes to our floodplain maps. I think we all know that the floodplain has changed. So we have put forward legislation to allow Eagle to be able to go and switch up those maps, which will free up some of that money to, you know, our businesses have struggled in getting federal assistance because it's not considered a floodplain. So looking at modernizing, updating some of that stuff. This next one is something I'm particularly excited about, $330 million in the budget for what's called the Michigan Achievement Scholarship. We expanded that, and then we've also rolled it into a community college guarantee. So the Michigan Achievement Scholarship is a scholarship that is available to every student graduating from high school in the state of Michigan, as long as you fill out your FASA, the Federal Financial Student Aid Form, which if you have a graduating senior in this year, 2024, you might have some PTSD from that process because they simplify it. But that's cleaned up, so we should be doing well going into next year and the following years. But the Michigan Achievement Scholarship is awarded its first dollar and last dollar. So what that means is you get qualified for a certain amount, and then it can come in at the end as well. So it attaches, like it goes along with any other scholarships or grants and things that you get before you go into student loan area. So, and this is a sliding scale award based on the type of education you are pursuing. So if it is a skilled trade certificate, if it's a community college, if it's a private four-year or a public four-year, the amount goes up. And so I believe it starts at $2,700 for skilled trades, and then the most is $5,500 annually. This is annually for a four-year public health facility. So, you know, roughly $25,000, a little more than that for the four-year. So, and the way the community college guarantee works is we were able to kind of expand this program a little bit in a couple of ways so that we are now, for students who are eligible, and this is up to 80% of Michigan students, so it's really getting into a broad chunk of the middle class. Folks who might be right on that line and don't typically qualify for scholarships and grants of this type are now able to take advantage. And the community college guarantee, what that will do is it will cover your tuition for your local community college. And if you don't live in a community college district, so our friends just across the street or they're in Jensen, they will get the same amount, and then they would be responsible out of pocket to cover the out-of-district amount because we recognize that folks who are paying an additional million in a community college district, so those folks who are not paying it because they chose not to be part of a community college district, you know, they should not be getting the full funding in the same way that the district students are who aren't paying those taxes. So it's a real opportunity for students to, for any students in Michigan to go to a community college tuition-free. So we recognize, however, that is not the true cost of college as we are talking about it these days, transportation, housing, potentially childcare. All of those things also influence somebody's decision to continue on into college and to persist. So we have expanded the, we've tacked on an additional $1,000 for our lowest-income students to help pay some of those other costs, books, like I said, food potentially. It's surprising that we have quite a hunger issue on our campuses. And I'm doing some work around that, too. It might come up, I think it comes up in the discussion. So I'll talk about that when it comes up. But yeah, so we're working on developing those kinds of supports for students as well. And then the last one here, $150 million for housing, which includes $50 million earmarked from the corporate income tax. And so the CIT, as we affectionately call it, is we're taking $50 million out of that pot of money to put towards housing. It's interesting, the corporate income tax this year became everybody's favorite place to find some extra cash because it had been being used in some other areas that were done funding. So we had quite a surplus in our corporate income tax. And so we're looking for ways to, you know, use that money anyways. And it's surprising to know that our corporate income tax is actually below the national average and below all of our corporate states. So I don't know. I know some folks have said, well, what if you raise that a percentage now? And we would still be below. And how much income would that generate? So we're looking at ways that we might be able to increase some of that. But certainly nothing set in stone today. So, but yeah, that seems to be a good revenue source for us with a lot of good corporate work. So these are some of the investments that I was responsible for primarily. And I also worked with, because so many of the things that we do are, tend to be not just district-specific, but, you know, impact the entire region. We worked together as a team in the House and the Senate to figure out, you know, which projects we all support. And then there's a couple that, you know, are specific to just my district. But I knew some of the benefit of that with the fire truck companies. So this first one was a counseling, this is a fantastic counseling program that works with schools. They have been incredibly successful in Ottawa County. They wanted to shift into Kent County, and so they were looking for $200,000 to help us stand that program. And we were able to support them in that. And one of the things that sets them apart from a typical counseling, first of all, they are all private practicing therapists who are donating their time or working on a lower-scale fee with their time. So they don't turn anybody away from mosaic counseling. And they also have this really unique model of, it's kind of like, they do a match. So if you've ever tried to find even a doctor, you know, you have to kind of call around or if you're going to a therapist, you know, and asking, what do you do? And, you know, and you kind of got to find this match. Which can be, you know, if you're in a mental health, not even crisis, you know, it can be overwhelming to try to figure that out. So at mosaic counseling, what they do is they, in their intake, they match you with a provider. And so you don't have to go through those steps and then that provider, or you don't have to make that phone call, saying, well, we're not taking your patients, you know, things like that. Like that whole piece is taken out of the puzzle, and they handle it for the clients. And so it's a really, just a fantastic model. Like I said, they have had a lot of success in Ottawa. And of course, as we continue to, you know, work with our kiddos, as they're still, you know, struggling with a lot of things. I mean, there's a lot going on for our kids, and I think we sometimes don't quite realize that. You know, the pandemic impacted them in ways that it did not impact us as adults. We said things like, oh, we're back to normal. But for our kids, they didn't know what normal was because this three years, I mean, as a kid, that's a lot of time, you know? And then you're 10 years old when it starts, and you're 13 when it ends, and now you got to go to high school, be successful, and it's back to normal. Like you haven't really experienced school in that way. And so there's a lot going on there for our kids. And then, of course, the school shootings have a huge impact on them, whether it's been in their school or not. That is something each and every one of them has actually experienced when they do an active shooter drill. So we have to really be thinking about the trauma that our kids are going through just being in this environment. So a lot, a lot for them to work on, but I'll stop there. Granville's Home for Veterans, this was one of our group asks, and we were able to secure $9.7 million for upgrades there. So very excited. Play for Nature Center, again, a place that, although not in Granville, I think, how many of you have been to Play for Nature Center? Maybe none of you are even a little. So we all know the benefit of Play for Nature Center, what it does for our schools and what not, and kids across the area. So happy to be supporting them. They're doing some classroom updates and expanding their program a little bit. This Hunger Free Campus Pilot at GRCC, I'm thrilled to be a part of. As I mentioned, hunger is actually a shockingly common problem for college students. And so we worked with a group of pilot students to develop guidelines for how a school might be considered hunger-free. And many of them already have pantries, they have programs on campus, they have, you know, things that they're doing to assist students with access to food. But by codifying that, now our schools can advertise, there's a standard, and schools can advertise that they are supporting students in this way. And then the pilot is that we were giving money to two community colleges and two universities that were hitting all the parts of the state, including EP, to test out, you know, what it would look like for the state to give a little support there. And this money goes to a school that, first of all, meets all the criteria of being hunger-free, so they already have programming in place. And the idea then is that they would be eligible for grants that might provide additional support. So for example, if they've been doing canned foods and they want to get like an industrial refrigerator so they can have some fresh foods or dairy and things like that, then they could get money for that kind of thing. So they're really small-dollar kind of programs that we're looking at opening up for schools across the state. And this is part of the pilot project to see how that works out. And then, you know, and like I said, it's just really surprising, but one of the things that is a real issue has to do with how, and this is one of the things we've talked about at the national level, is how, even with SNAP benefits, if somebody's eligible, you can't use that on prepared food. So if you're going to college and there's a food court, you can't use your money there. So these are kids who have to like go to the grocery store and prepare, I mean, you know, if you've been to college, you know, you know what that looks like, or if your classes are at certain times and things like that. Like you just don't have access to food. So we're also looking at ways that we can tie some of that student aid information into like a common application. So if you're eligible at this level, you automatically get kicked into information about other social programs to help with those things. And then the last one is the Community Solar Array at Butterworth Landfill, which has been a dream project. It started, I believe, with Mayor Hartnell and all through Mayor Bliss's tenure. And we were finally able to bring $3 million home for that. And so it'll be a great use of the space at the landfill, or excuse me, at the landfill to be utilizing that for some energy production, so we can have consumers and other stakeholders to iron out. to iron out that whole project, but looking forward to it, to what that means for us. And I think in Granville, you can maybe especially appreciate that, I know you do such a great job with the water treatment plant and the renewable work that you're doing there. And so thinking about how we can have these different centers, you know, or areas of focus throughout the community, I think it's just, it's just fantastic how it can all tie together. So, all right, next. Another project I'm really proud of is St. Mark's Community Center. If you know St. Mark's Episcopalian Church downtown, they have a homeless program that they run on Saturday mornings. It's the only place that our unhoused folks can get food on a Saturday morning. And they partner with MSU College of Medicine, so those kids are coming in and doing some very baseline medical, you know, testing exams. So they're getting some practice. Our community is getting some of the support they need. And St. Mark's is looking to expand. They want to do some outside showers, they want to do a little bit more there. And so we were able to secure that money very specifically for the community center. And, you know, we're very careful to not be investing, of course, in improving the church, but just this area that they're doing their community work in. And interestingly enough, they have a food pantry that students from Kendall College of Art Design, which is right across the street, they partake because they, again, have a food issue. And extra food they have at St. Mark's goes to the pantry at U.S.C. so they're a great community partner in many, many ways. So pleased to be reinvesting in that. Meals on Wheels, right here in Granville. So two million dollars for their expansion. They're doing a lot of great work at Meals on Wheels and they're involved in a national pilot for WHO Is Medicine. And so for them to again be able to expand their kitchen and their cold storage and things like that, so that they can really get into more of these specialty meals will be a huge benefit. And of course, as our population continues to age, we more and more need Meals on Wheels. And if you haven't been over there, I really encourage you to go have a look. And I always have to give a little plug to Meals on Wheels. It's not income dependent. Anybody can partake of Meals on Wheels. And it's just a great way for, for folks to have a weekly check in, to have a regular person coming by. You know, myself, I'm not quite that old, but, but I'm old enough that I'm an empty nester. And even for me, like getting a healthy meal every day is sometimes challenging. I don't know, I come home and there's the chips and the salsa, you know, I'm just gonna have a quick snack and suddenly that's what I have for dinner. So, so I know for, you know, elderly folks who are cooking less, cooking for one, you know, that can be challenging, even if you don't have, you know, an economic challenge or a physical challenge, just that idea of preparing good, healthy food for yourself can often fall to the side. So just a great program overall. About half million for Granite Pacific Theater, if you're familiar with the construction going on downtown. When we do construction, and you know this, the owner of the building is responsible for the sidewalks and that's Pacific Theater. So they are on the hook for all the sidewalk work that is going on in relation to the city project. And that area hadn't been touched for pretty much ever since the theater had been built, like a hundred years ago. So they, there's quite a bit of other work that needs to be done under the sidewalk and they are going to install also heated sidewalks there. So that'll be a nice, nice piece there for them. So happy to help them out. And the public museum, as they were doing their recent renovations, they came, you may have seen this, they came across some really interesting items and want to add those to their archives and expand the archives building that they have. And so we were able to invest in that, support the work that they're doing. And next. Korean War Veterans Memorial Drive. I don't know if I've mentioned this to anyone here. But I was asked, I don't know if you're aware, I lived in South Korea for a couple of years, number of years ago, but I have a little bit of a connection there. And so when I was approached about this idea of doing a Korean War Veterans Memorial Drive, I said, why, sure? And Doug Boss, I hope you know him, the gentleman in the picture, he's quite active in a number of veterans groups here throughout the area. So I worked with him on it and we have decided to designate pretty much all of Wilson as Korean War Veterans Memorial Drive. It's very fitting because it starts right there by the Army Reserve Center on Three Mile, goes by Remembrance Road, so named for, you know, Remembrance, where we have a Memorial Day Parade every year in Walker. There also, there's a First Responder's Memorial there and we're working on some other military installments there to recognize the war on terror and things like that. So it will go all the way through to roughly just past to the bridge, over the Grand River, so just past the American Legion House. So we tried to do that to anchor it onto military sites. So excited about that. And as soon as, as soon as we can get that one finished up, I was wondering what happened to the bill? This is, this is what we do. I was like, what happened to that bill? How come I have some, people were asking me, I was like, I thought we, I thought we done. And then I found out it was stuck in the Senate and for some reason it had been referred to the Senate Appropriations Committee during budget season. And I said, well, that's probably not the right place for this bill. So we are going to be taking it up here this fall and finishing that up so we can unveil the road and hopefully include some Korean War veterans. We have a small group here in Granite's area, many of them in their nineties. You know, the Korean War is considered, they call it the forgotten war, which is, you know, somewhat insulting to those who fought in that war. So really pleased to be able to get to that. And other big investments in the next one, we've been doing a lot of work, a lot of work in the clean energy. I'm sure you've heard some of this, our plan to be carbon free, sixty percent renewables by 2030, 2035, carbon free. We're really looking at how this is going to transition our workforce. There's a lot of, I think, interesting jobs available there, will lower household energy costs, and we will be responding to some serious public health issues also. Let me see, we can go to the next one. And so a couple of different things here, working on PFAS and other emerging contaminants. One of the interesting things we're doing with PFAS too is not just reactive, but we're starting to switch to proactive and look at how, what are the sources of PFAS and how we can control that matter. Grants for businesses, nonprofits, and local government units. And I actually have a website I can share with you all where you can kind of check through what projects you have that might be eligible. For renewable energy and electrification infrastructure, and that's one of the things that we've talked about with the water plant, DPW is really, really trying to secure some money for that project. It's a, it's just a top line project nationally, internationally. And so we want to make sure that folks know about it and that we are supporting that. With the electrification infrastructure, I had an interesting conversation just yesterday. I was talking about this, we were driving back, my nephew got married in Chicago, we were driving back from Chicago and, you know, in Chicago, we have a bunch of Teslas. And so we're like, look at all these electric, you know? So we kind of got on a conversation of infrastructure for that and what that looks like. And my, my youngest son is working towards his dirty man card in, as an electrician and his cousin is already a dirty man and the two of them, you know, they have very grand ideas. But I really got thinking about that and I'm like, who's maintaining those, like charging spots, right? Who's responsible for that? And as we continue to move forward, you know, what are the regulations around it? What's that, like, what could be a great setup business for some non-electricians to get in on the ground floor of, you know, installing and maintaining these things? So, you know, there's so much to think about and I would encourage as a city to consider where you might be able to support electric charging. Great spaces are things like at the library. You want to pick a spot, you know, where people are going to need for a certain amount of time. So it's not like a gas station where you pull it and charge at night, right? There can be some fast charging, but really thinking strategically about those kinds of things. And even within zoning, you know, is there, you might want to require in the future, think about as new apartments or multi-unit housing is coming in, is there a requirement to include some electrification infrastructure and things like that so that Granville can continue to draw people, you know, as we continue making this shift? Certainly a long ways off from a hundred percent electrification, electric vehicles, but we have a lot of hybrids and things. And so it's just one of those things we want to keep looking forward on until they stay relevant. And then we have additional money there for energy efficiency projects from these businesses. And that's it? That's it?
No, great. Well, thank you so much. Questions for Representative Glanville about anything?
Yeah, any specific questions? Clarifications?
Randy? Sure, a couple of questions, but first a couple of comments. Thank you very much for your help in the past with our fire department. As we struggled to get a new roof on the department and keep a dry over there, so nothing rusted out. So thank you. But I have a question. It's been on the topic for a lot of us as, and first I want to thank you for having your legislative assistant come down here, meet with us, Steve Martin. You probably know where I'm going with this, but as you know, Tip O'Neill said, years ago, all politics is local. So we're dealing with looking at a three million dollar road repair. That would be from Canal to Kenowa over the expressway. That was a road built by MDOT back in the day, made with probably eight to 10 inches of concrete with re-rired in it. It's going to be a huge expense for a city that maybe has a 10 or 11 million dollar annual budget, not counting our enterprise's fund. And I appreciate Steve and his work. Formerly, I worked back in Lansing when it was the 74th District, from the Sicoma, Kin Sicoma era forward. Many, many years ago, we had a local businessman, J&amp;H Oil, who wanted a curb cut put onto 44th Street. And we were told we were not able to do that because that road from Kenowa to Canal was jurisdiction of MDOT. Since then, we've had another gas station develop on the opposite corner, come and go, who would like very much to have a curb cut on the 44th Street. And I'm not saying our planning commission would agree to this, but it begs the question, do we have the right to grant that or entertain that at a planning level commission? We plowed that road, so is it our road and do we have that right? Or should we be reimbursed like, you know, in 1128th Street, the county plows that because it's considered a state highway? Or indeed, is that under the jurisdiction, jurisdiction of MDOT? And so having been formerly in the same shoes that Steve was as a legislative liaison, you talk to the, or assisting, you talk to the legislative liaison of the department, I guess I would like to know where the rule changes is. And I guess I would like to know, I guess I would like to see something from the director of the department that says, no, that's a city road based on A, B, C, D, whatever, or no, there is federal funding to fix that road, or this is an MDOT issue. Because it's kind of like, you know, you kind of can't have it both ways, right? If we're going to plow it and it's our road, we should be able to give a curb cut to a gas station if they want it. Again, not saying our planning commission would want to do that, but if not, it's an MDOT road. We would have never built a road like that. And if we go to replace it, we're certainly not going to replace it to those standards. And if you look at the map of where all the fencing is, all that real estate, the footprint is all owned by the federal government. There's no delineation between the on-ramps, the off-ramps, federal property, and then fences that, oh, it's a little road to Granville. So I would just encourage you to pursue that. And I would be very interested in seeing correspondence from the director himself about when and where, if indeed those rules did change.
Yeah, and I know, we have, yes, he's calling right now.
His ears are burning.
No, and I know, and I believe Griffin Matt was the invite I was talking about. I believe we have a meeting on the books to go over all that tomorrow.
I would be happy to participate in a meeting. I'm not aware of one right now.
And thank you.
Thursday, Thursday. Okay, all right.
And thank you for being here. That was just my rant, so.
No, I appreciate it. Coming from, you know, Walker, we have gone back, I hear you, I understand what, what working with MDOT is like. And I appreciate that there is, you know, again, we've been working on that for a rich, rich project for years. The same thing, right? Federal, city, state, like who's, who's doing what and who has jurisdiction. So I'd be interested to pull Congressman Swolten in on this as well. She covers a series.
Yes. Thank, thank you.
So yeah, to the extent that, yeah, we can get us all together and figure out what follow might be. See if we can get somebody to own up to who's property.
Not sure we want it, but it'd be nice to know.
Well, and I don't know if you want MDOT to have it either because, you know, they won't. I mean, not speaking on their behalf, but I know that can be difficult when you want to make some of those changes and not to.
Well, we just need to plan, you know, going forward, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Very specific.
I'll make it work.
You ready?
Sure.
Any other?
I have a question. Is there any way that you can step in and help us fix every railroad crossing in Granville?
Every railroad crossing?
Especially Wilson and Franklin.
I mean, potentially, yeah, I guess we wouldn't need the details on that.
When you call railroad, they just ignore you and don't do anything. I get a lot of complaints in my office about you need to fix the railroad tracks.
But we can't.
The railroad vehicles actually vibrate sideways. Is there anything you can do to help?
Certainly, yeah. I will have my team reach out and get more, work in more detail on it and see who we need to talk to or can't talk to and who we need to have at the table to make some of these decisions. As you mentioned, railroads are very, you know, they, they like owning their railroads, even if they're not using them.
As long as that train was screened and tracked, you don't care what happens.
Yeah. So, yeah, I know that can be another kind of hard nut to crack, but we will see what we can do to support it.
Appreciate it.
Start the conversation.
Any other questions, comments? So I've got a quick question. So you're the chair of the Higher Education Committee. So let me put you on the spot a little bit. One of your former students is here. So you did a great job as an educator because he's one of my favorite council members. So thank you very much. Was he, was Justin a good student of yours?
Oh, he was.
The best?
He was.
Okay. My question was, you were talking to, yeah. Did he get an A? No, you don't have an A, I'm sure. So you were, you were talking about, you're part of a Midwest?
Midwest Higher Education.
Yeah, I'm kind of interested in that.
Yeah, so it's, I believe, I can't remember, it's 15 or 12 states. For some reason, I never get stuck in my head. But anyways, so it's, you know, Minnesota, Nebraska, Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, like all of us, you know, are here. And so we work together to do things and we actually bring, it actually decreases the cost of higher ed in each state because we have a number of interstate agreements. So things like, in some cases, transfer credits. We have, you know, vendor, you know, contracts so that we can purchase and buy, you know, from, for different technology and whatever. So we have a number of those types of agreements that run through that contact, but then we're also, as I said, looking at things like credit transfer, which is such a huge issue for students. Many times, and you'll get, even in high school, you know, you get credit for certain classes, AP classes and things like that, you go to college and you get credit, but it's not actually applied to your degree. So where a degree might be a hundred and thirty credits, you end up having to take, you know, even twenty more, you know, you end up with a hundred and fifty, you have just twenty extra credits. So we're looking at really specifically how we can do that transfer process a little more smoothly so that students are getting, especially for those core courses, right? I mean, if you're taking, you know, your basic, you know, math, English, whatever, health, you know, your electives, those should, those should count wherever you go. And so those are the kinds of agreements that we can put into place across the Midwest. And the Midwest Higher Contact also is a fantastic data warehouse for us. So we can see all the trends in education, you know, the demographics. I mean, if you want information about how kids from Granville High School are, you know, where they're going or things like that, we can, we can kind of get some of that together and really nail that down in looking at what their success rates are, persistence, things like that. So then that allows us to more accurately prioritize policy here in the same issue. And also consider, you know, what are other states? And also consider, you know, what are other states doing? There are some states that have really gotten rid of out-of-state tuition, for example. So students are more likely to, you know, hopefully go there. Because we know if students go to a state for college, they tend to kind of put down those roots there. We want them to come here, we want them to stay here. So we look at ways that we can do all that, optimize our higher ed for, you know, the type of people. And so that, that group is a big part of that work that we do.
And just also wanted to thank you for your work on, uh, some recent changes to adoption disclosures and so on, so thank you. And also court-appointed guardianship, Attorney General Dana Nessel came to Granville maybe about a year ago. And I, I learned a lot. I was really surprised, so thank you for your advocacy and the changes that were made there. It's very important, so.
Yeah, no, that was, that was a big one, so I was pleased to get that worked on.
Justin?
Yeah, so in case there's any confusion, I am the student, so it's good to see you back here. Thank you very much for your presentation and for being here. One issue that, since I've been on the council, has just irked me, and I brought it up before. If you look in our budget tonight, on the bills that we approved, there's over $2,000 to MLive. It seems like our, no, to MLive, sorry, so, yeah, MLive Media Group.
Oh, sure, sure.
So we have statutes that require that we notify for meetings and such, but it seems like they're very archaic in what they're requiring because I'm very much for transparency. But transparency doesn't mean just throwing it out there. It means meeting people where they're actually going to see it and know. And so if you were to pull the room and ask how many people have checked out the Grand Rapids press lately or something like that, you know, you're going to find that times have changed. So I would just like to urge some, some greater thought on how, it's not an enormous burden, but it is a burden on municipalities that they have to pay those, and I don't really think that they are yielding the intended purpose, which was to bring transparency to the public, so.
And is that 2,000 annually?
That was just in this bill. I don't know what the annual, but it's.
Yeah, we're spending hundreds and thou- hundreds or thousands of dollars every couple of weeks, every time we have to post something in the newspaper. It, it could be an ordinance was adopted, it could be whatever else it may be, it could be a public meeting notice, but, you know. Justin's absolutely right. There's a number of things that we have to post in a newspaper of general circulations, the common term, and it doesn't matter what that costs, the law says we have to do it.
It has to be a print publication, right?
Correct, yes.
It can't be a digital publication.
I will take a look into that. Our neighbor to Southwest, John Fitzgerald is the chair of the municipal. I think that falls under his auspices, so I will mention that to him, see if he's working on it or what we're doing there. But it might be part of it. I wonder if it's part of the FOIA reform or whatever. Because we're changing, trying to, trying to update FOIA. So I wondered if it's part of it, can take a look and see.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for indulging me.
No, appreciate it. Thanks for the update.
Well, that's right. I feel like if I come back a little more frequently, if there's a specific topic, you know, we can. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for what you do for us. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey, and good luck this weekend.
Thank you. Vintage's best, yes.
Which, oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you know you have a festival?
I do know, I do know. Yes, I'm going to be there. Teresa?
Thanks very much.
Do you know we're having a festival this weekend? Actually, I carried some stuff in for her for today for that, so thank you. Thanks. Okay, time for public comment. Anybody here like to address the council? Just come on up, tell us your name and address, tell us what you're thinking about. Chris, you can do it right from where you're at, because I know it's, yeah, a little bit harder to get up here. Anything tonight? Okay. Carolyn? Kyla, you want to tell what we were doing on Friday? I have the blister to show for it.
We, we have a four slot that we're trying to drive a well into to get irrigation. And I don't know if anybody saw my Facebook post, but Steve has been unable to come out when we've been driving up with like a post driver, thanks to the DPW. And the post driver is so heavy that you can hardly get it up over your head. And Steve got, said to me Friday, 2:00, why don't you go, go drive that well in? I'm just like, oh my gosh. So I'm like, Steve, 2:00 Friday afternoon, I can't even get anybody to help. And so we managed to get Jeff Parks and Roger, or Richard Canteras, and both of them put an hour in. Steve drove that well, they pounded a pipe in over five feet and we get water Friday.
Yes, we did. Yes, very exciting.
For like two or three weeks, off and on, we hit like something solid and had to figure out how to pull the pipe. And Chad from the DPW, he, he actually came out and figured out a way to get it out off hours, not like after work, just as a volunteer. But it's the kind of people that we have in this city that will just volunteer and help with projects that you're working on. And the mayor is out there, you'll see the video on Facebook.
It was fun. It was, it was a good workout.
I have never seen grown men so excited. And Ben Wykamp came, he actually knows how to do this, and he was one of my main mentors to tell us how to do it. And he was there when we hit the water. He was the one who dropped the string in and got wa- pulled it out and it's dripping and I'm already screaming and yelling. It was something to what you do, and you put it on, on like a cotton string and you drop it down into the well to see if you hit water yet, and it's a pipe you've been driving in. And then it'll tell you how deep it is too. I mean, Ben's been in contact with me three or four times. He was pretty excited.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thank you.
No, thanks for everything you do with that. Tree project, tree board, everything. Thank you.
Yeah, it'll make it a lot easier to keep things alive. We kind of, you know, like, it was a hit or miss if you planted something, if it lived or not, if you could get enough water on it. So it's, it's really exciting.
You owe me a Band-Aid though, for right there. Appreciate that. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spotlight. Anybody else like to talk to the council? Now's your chance. Last call. Anybody? Okay. All right, on the consent agenda, a lot of items here, and approval would be in the best interest of the city because there are a lot of purchases. So we've got the EMS fire June report and July report from the police, which was really good. Love the pictures and the narrative, chief. And the treasurer's report as well. Also, planning commission minutes and the appointment for the planning commission. Looks like you interviewed some people and Tim Mannard was your selection.
Correct, yeah, we interviewed.
Yeah.
We had four interviews set, 75% of those people showed up.
Okay.
And we decided you didn't have to leave on Tim Mannard.
Yeah, and I've known him for years and know, know he's very interested in what's going on, so, nice choice. Also a resolution, a charitable gaming license for a football booster event, charitable thing, so.
My understanding is this is something you all have done in the past, be for a 50/50 raffle during home football games at Granville High School.
Another item that I was really happy to see was under the purchase orders, the clock, City Hall Tower clock. So get that. So it's always telling perfect time. A generator repair, some things at the clean water plant, phosphorus analyzer in the pond mixer, motor pool, a couple Chevy Tahos. Those are for the police department, I believe.
Correct.
And then also some paving at Heritage Park and the water tank. And that, I can't remember the name of the company, but they were the low bidder, I believe. That was, let me find it here. Of course I can't find it.
I have it right here. It was Great Lakes Paving.
Great Lakes Paving, yep.
Incorrect. They were the, the low qualified bidder.
Low qualified, okay.
I think we threw that bid out because based on review, they did not quote the full amount of square yards that the project's going to take.
So the qualified, lowest qualified bidder. And then also a leak detection survey. And then also a purchase from the police department for one patrol rifle. So, do you really need to come to us for that, or?
Yeah, it was over $1,000.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, um, so anything, any of these items, anybody would like to discuss before we entertain a motion to approve in the best interest of the city? Randy?
I just have a question, I guess, for the treasurer. There's a handful of purchases here, all in the budget, but, and under budget, happy to see that. But like six or so where all the city account codes have been changed. And I'm just wondering if we can get a little clarification why they've all been redirected to different accounts.
This year, we crossed over into the new account number system. And when our AP person puts in the purchase order, that is then tied to the purchase and it can't be changed without a journal entry. So we've started adjusting those upfront. The books will be out to staff here probably end of this week, beginning of next week, so the numbers will be, should be stored up. We're still looking at PS and AI, getting the rest of our numbers changed, but it's quite a process, kind of getting the money to the state, so.
I've never seen before and I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the consent agenda? Questions? Anything anybody wants to discuss? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city? Motion by Josh?
Support.
By JR. Any other questions, comments? Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Calderwels?
Yes.
Merenga?
Yes.
Lordhook?
Yes.
Mayor Moss?
Yes. City managers report, you've got a few things for us today.
We do. We're trying to make some things happen.
Yeah.
We're going to go ahead and start with the first thing on, on the agenda is a change order for the fire department. The memo in the packet details the request and the amount of $38,676 to add cleaning and sealing of the masonry associated with the fire station to the scope of work. This was work that was included in the approved budget for this year. We're just looking to move it from the DPW building and grounds budget to the project budget for this project. The chief has been working with the project manager there and feels like we can get it done more timely this way. The project manager out on site already has a mason that they're working with, some other parts of the project. They were able to quote that work for us, and my understanding is we're comfortable moving forward with that. We do have Chief and Charlie both here, if there are any other questions.
Any questions on this? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the change order from Deckhouse Construction Incorporated in the amount of $38,676 to add cleaning and sealing of the masonry to the scope of work?
So move, support.
Motion by Tim, support by Josh. Randy?
This was already in the buildings and ground budget somewhere else?
That's my understanding, is we're not asking for any additional money, we're just looking to relocate that money to the specific project.
Okay.
Comments, questions?
I was just going to say, I was glad, I'm glad that we're doing that. I was going to ask somebody if we were going to get that cleaning done now that we're putting that new roof and everything on, so definitely needs it.
Hot topic, a discussion. A lot of you reached out to me and, as I've explained, we were reluctant to power wash that because most of it's microbial. We knew we didn't have mold in the building, but we knew we certainly had it outside of the building. And the building is unsealed as it has been, we just didn't want to push it all inside, so.
Yeah.
That's why that was deferred for some reason.
This will be the best looking building in town when it's all done, right?
You know, I offered to do the.
Well, it just will be clean and shiny and dry and.
Thirty years.
I know we did something similar with the library a couple of years ago and we did that project to clean up the masonry around the roof and stuff there too. And it does make a big difference. It looks a lot better, so I'm glad we're doing that.
I told the chief I wanted to power wash that building and that would be so much fun, but somebody, a real, somebody who knows what they're doing is going to do that. Yeah, I know, but it could have been a lot of fun, actually.
Two and a half inch line.
All right, Kay, did we have more, we had a motion to support on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Calderwels?
Yes.
Merenga?
Yes.
Lordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Mayor Moss?
Yes. Next item is classification and compensation study. It seemed like we just had one done, but it's been five years.
Yes, so the, the city of Granville last completed compensation and classification study in 2019. Since then, as you all are aware, there's been quite a few changes in the world post-COVID and just really the employment environment in general is, is quite different. So with that, we included in the budget for this year, funding to support a new compensation and classification study. The Human Resources Assistant helped to facilitate an RFP process. We were very fortunate to receive 10 competitive proposals. Upon review, we are ultimately recommending that city council authorize us to move forward with the professional services agreements with a firm called Pontifex Consulting Group. This is a group that, for a number of reasons, we, we think is going to do a really good job for our organization. Everything from competitive cost, the proposal content, several regional references, including those organizations in this area that really are considered comps for us. And then lastly, just want to highlight that part of their proposal was also the option to help with implementation at the end, at no additional cost. So a few other things I'll just highlight is, you know, it's really important for organizations like the city of Granville to regularly review these compensation and classification systems. They allow us to remain competitive in the attraction and retention of talent, which at the end of the day is really necessary to provide the high-quality service to the community that I know we're all really striving to do. My understanding is the city council approved $35,000 in the budget for this effort this year. And my understanding is the proposal we're looking to move forward with is closer to the 19,000 or 20,000 range. So we are going to be under budget on that project, which is good, doesn't always work out that way. And the only other thing I'll highlight is, is the goal is to move forward with this sooner rather than later that, so that we can hopefully have the completed study in time to inform the budget process for fiscal year '25, '26, in the case there are any changes we need to discuss with the council at that time. So with that, happy to answer any other questions you all may have. I will draw to your attention one more thing, if you don't mind, just as a friendly reminder to make sure everyone is on the same page. This compensation study would be for only non-union positions, as our union positions are negotiated via their collective bargaining, bargaining agreements every handful of years. So this study would be specifically for the non-union positions we have in the organization.
Great. Questions for Griffin about this proposal to do the compensation study? I noticed they have done, thank you for calling through, like 10 of them. And they've done like City Walker, or represent Granville, was before, City Kentwood, City Holland, Plainfield Township, Allendale Township, City of Iona. So, I mean, they're very familiar where they are, so.
Yes. I've not personally worked with this firm before, but we did check in addition to the references. I spoke with several other of the city managers of those communities and based on the feedback we received, everyone was very pleased with this firm's work. So we're very comfortable recommending them this evening.
Questions for Griffin? If not, is there a motion to approve entering into a professional services agreement with Pontifex Consulting Group LLC to conduct a classification and compensation study? Ask for their proposal, which I believe is for $19,000.
So move, support.
Motion by Tim, support by Paul. Any other comments, questions? Motion by Tim, support by Paul. Any other comments, questions? Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Mayor Moss?
Yes. EMS consortium study. Speaking of collaboration.
Absolutely. So, the memo in the packet details a request to participate in phase one of a system analysis with the regional EMS consortium. This is a group that was formed in, my understanding is about 2013, where the city of Granville joined with Grand Rapids, East Grand Rapids, Plainfield Township, Rockford, Wyoming, and Kentwood to study and enhance the EMS service provided to the region. There are presently three private ambulance companies, Life EMS, AMR, and Rockford Ambulance that provides service in Kent County. They, this consortium created a contract with these three providers, which was approved by the city council in 2016. That contract is set to expire at the end of 2025. And the consortium is recommending conducting an analysis of the service area prior to starting work on a new contract, just to make sure that the service in the area is as efficient and effective as possible, given the environment we are in. As we all can imagine, EMS service is incredibly important to all of those communities. And trying to do an assessment is just a good practice in terms of making sure we're providing the best service we can to all of these communities. So, with that being said, this is not a budgeted expenditure for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, but it is anticipated that the cost can be covered with the amount not being spent on the classification and compensation study, if the city council is so inclined. Depending on the results, the consortium has talked about conducting some additional phases, but that would be really more of a conversation on a community by community basis, because that's when you're gonna start getting into really more of size of community impact. But for this case right now, we're just looking at cost sharing, a sixty thousand dollar phase-one study with the rest of the EMS consortium. I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any other questions. Otherwise, Chief May can probably help me with a little bit more of the technicalities of the service itself, but that's my understanding right now.
So, in the memo from City of East Grand Rapids, healthcare strategist was, their proposal was like a hundred and forty-nine thousand. So, this sixty thousand, that's just phase one?
Correct. That's the first phase, which is the system-wide assessment. Again, in my understand is then, based on those results, the EMS consortium or individual units, individual local governments could decide to move forward with additional phases. And those were the costs adding up above sixty thousand to what you see in the memo from East Grand Rapids. That would be more in-depth data analysis. That would be much more specific to individual communities, where right now they're looking at doing a system-wide review.
And who's our representative? I think Ken Krabian used to be.
Ken was the chair, correct.
Okay.
And Ken was the chair for quite some time.
So, we've got somebody at the table for this?
Yes.
Chief, and you?
Yes.
Okay. You're recommending this?
Yes, I'm recommending that we cost share it with the rest of the group, continue to be a good partner with them, and we'll see where it goes from there.
And that first number, mayor's one forty-nine, or whatever you threw out.
Yeah.
That was an initial RFP that came back that was well beyond the scope of what we were looking for.
I see.
So, there was a subcommittee that put a East Grand Rapids city manager. He led that, and they had a second meeting and pared that way back to something more in line with what we were looking for. That's how it went from one forty-nine, or whatever it was, down to sixty.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Was there a motion to approve a payment toward this amount, in the amount of eighty-six hundred dollars, to the EMS consortium analysis?
So moved. Support.
Motion by Justin, support by JR. Any other comments, questions? Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Mayor Moss?
Yes. Next item is a request from the downtown development authority. And director, Teresa, tell us about the video that we're doing tomorrow, hopefully, if we get approved.
So, at the last city council meeting, because Josh already had submitted the campus project for the MML, so it's a word, and guys are new finalists. So, I think somebody, it might have been Josh, I asked if we could give a few votes for a video, just to help with the presentation, based on the council members. That will be on that. The DDA had approved for me to go and be part of that presentation, which I'm very excited about, because I'm the staff member, I think, most closely related to the project. I was happy to take it with me on this. So, we got three different votes for videos, and put the most reasonable one in the packet. It is by the general deputy of the Fourth of July video as well.
Just great.
So, DDA did approve on Thursday to go up to fifteen hundred, other cost of the video, table assignment handouts, in the hopes that city council would do the same. And then this presentation will be upended on this video. So, Nathan has been very helpful with us up to this point, kind of on good faith that we think this is where we're going, because with everything we're thinking about this video, a video needs to take place tomorrow at the farm market. So, but it's.
Well, Josh, thank you for all your work in getting this ball moved as far as it has. Do you remember the presentation at the MML? I think it was maybe Traverse City? It was the Shaiwasi River?
Where they were all in the canoe.
Where they all came with their canoes and paddles. So, I don't know. That's gonna be, that's gonna be hard to beat. But it was, I even remember the song they did about the Shaiwasi River.
Well, I don't know if we have a song, right, but?
Well, not yet, but.
So, yeah, I did mention to you last time we met, I think, that we were a finalist. So, one of four projects out of fourteen, you know, to be recognized statewide for our project. And that's wonderful. Gives us an opportunity to highlight some of the good work that's going on here statewide with our peers across the state at the convention. I've heard that the convention is gonna be packed. They've had a very good response to registrations. And the Mackinac Island convention that happens typically every four years is usually a pretty big draw for people. So, it's also, you know, a little bit different as far as the community excellence awards presentations, because whatever you take up there, you gotta haul on the boat and everything to get over there. And so, the tables tends to be a little more scaled back than it is otherwise. But it's a seven-minute presentation up on stage. I know several of us will be there, so we would be there in person. And typically, if you've been at the convention, you know, often these presentations are videos. That gives you kind of the most bang for your buck and the ability to kind of connect with the audience and kind of share your story within the timeframe, because they will cut your microphone at seven minutes. And so, that's typically what it's kind of been. We've been there presenting before. You may recall that we were a finalist and ultimately the winner in 2012 with the clean water plant project, with our egg-shaped digester, you know, the first in the state. And we had a nice video for that as well. I think we were actually one of the first video presentations, because often they had been kind of PowerPoints or stand-up with slides and stuff before. But that has become more of the norm. And so, I'm just, I'm really happy that Teresa's been willing to partner on that and, you know, be part of that and take the lead on setting up the video and everything. So, I really love the Fourth of July video. We had really good feedback on that last time. So, I'm really pleased that Nathan's willing to work with us on this on kind of short notice to put something together. And I'm really excited to see what he's got to help us tell our story, so.
That sounds like a motion to.
I hope he will approve it. But yes, I would make a motion to approve that expense in the best interest of the city for the project.
Randy, is that a support?
Yes.
Unless you want to do the presentation for.
Any other comments, questions? We have a motion by Josh and support by Randy. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Mayor Moss?
Yes, yes. Griffin, anything else?
Couple other quick more announcements I'll share. I know we're gonna wait and talk about closed session here in a little bit. But just want to make sure the city council is aware that the city has posted for the vacant position as deputy chief of police. This position was posted internally and externally on August fifth. The chief put together a really nice-looking brochure that we're using as an informational package to try to inform external or internal candidates more about the position, should they be interested. Obviously, that's an important role for our organization. So, we want to make sure that we are getting the best applicants that we can. As part of that, we are going to be looking for one member of the city council to participate in a second round interview that we are planning to host publicly at a date to be determined. So, I don't need to put anyone on the spot right now, but if anyone on the council is interested in participating in that, please let me know in the next couple of weeks. If we get too many interested, we may bring it back at one point. We'll let the city council ultimately determine who they want to do that. But just so there is a level of participation there, please put some thought into that. If that's something you're interested in, please let me or the chief know, and we'll move forward from there. I would also like to acknowledge that after a long battle with cancer, I'm really excited to share that Matt Butts has returned to work. He returned last Thursday for his first day. He was in the office here today. He's going to be doing a part-time schedule for the foreseeable future, but we're really excited to have him back with the team. Also, would like to give a special shout-out to the clerk's office for all their work last week on the primarily, primary election. And it was the first election I had a chance to be here for. And really just want to acknowledge the hard work they do. We're really fortunate to have, you know, Marcy and her experience, as well as some new folks in the clerk's office that were just incredibly helpful. And then looking ahead, we've got some other projects moving that I want you all to be aware about in terms of the meeting on the twenty-sixth. We're likely gonna be talking about the signal upgrade at Prairie and Wilson that I know we've been studying for quite some time, is on a lot of people's radar. We're gonna have a project update on the clean water plant lightning repair. That's gonna largely be an insurance project, but we want to make sure you are all in the loop on that. We may have another fire station change order coming, so stay tuned. And then lastly, we're hoping, keep your fingers crossed, to have the new fire truck back in town. And if we have it back and ready by that day, our plan will be to display it before the meeting, so you all have a chance to look at that. But other than that, I don't have any other announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions for Griffin? Okay, if not, let's go to council member comments, and then we're going to look for a motion to adjourn into closed session to talk about collective bargaining.
Yeah, we'll need to come and stick us back into open.
Okay, recess.
Correct.
Well, recess. Right. JR, comments?
Nothing to add. I saw your memo, Griffin, on Friday, and I'd be happy to be a part of the deputy interviews if nobody else wants to. I don't need to do it, but if nobody else wants to, raise their hand up.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have nothing else to add, thanks.
I just want to say, kudos to everyone. A lot of good things are happening. This was a great agenda tonight. Got a lot done. And shout-out to you, Councilman Nordhook, for bringing up that M Live. I had totally forgotten about that. And that's a, that's a great insight. And I think she's gonna go back, and she's gonna be able to help us. So, thanks. Thanks for catching that.
Thank you. I also take my students, have historically, to Lansing, and Representative Fitzgerald represents the Godfrey Lee area. And so, I get to meet with him, so I'm gonna repeat that message when I see him next time as well. Exactly, exactly. So, a lot of what I have to say is just echoing what Spence said, but very excited to see that Matt has returned in the limited capacity that he's able to, but great to have him back. I want to commend the deputy clerk for a job well done tonight. I remember, you know, my first meeting feeling very overwhelmed sitting up here and how this all works, but you ran it flawlessly. So, well done. And just another note on the Vintage Festival, the Historical Commission will have a tent this weekend, so I will be there Saturday morning, God willing, with the weather. So, right now, it's a little, Teresa always has rain in the forecast, but, you know, it's gonna work out. So, I'm sorry to use that for a literal word, but it's gonna be good. So, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, I was also gonna say, welcome back to Matt. I was hoping maybe he'd be here tonight. We could see him in person, but he's probably had a long day already. So, glad that he's back and, you know, continue to wish him well. And it's great having him back at City Hall, getting back into things. So, just also wanted to mention the National Night Out last week, Tuesday, where there was a number of block parties in the area. I got to see the chiefs and some of the folks from the police and fire department. Griffin was there as well. My neighborhood has done a block party for years and years. And, you know, you get busy, and you don't always see your neighbors, and people aren't always outside and that sort of thing. So, it's always a good opportunity to just kind of mingle with your neighbors, catch up on the news, and, you know, just see people and really kind of build community. So, it's always great to have the police and fire department there, you know, with the trucks. We got to see both of the new trucks out there, which was great. The ladder truck and then the other bumper truck, I believe, was the two new ones that were there. And it's nice weather, not quite warm enough to be spraying everybody with water this year, but just appreciate that tradition continuing and, you know, being able to be part of that with my neighbors. So, and thank you for approving the video request. So, I'm looking forward to that. And thank you for Teresa for kind of spearheading that, helping us with that.
Randy?
It's just great to hear about Matt's recovery and that he's doing better. He's gonna be here. He's done a great job for the city and just so happy for him and his family that he's back. So, pretty much it. And I was gonna tell Justin, if you talk to Rep. Fitzgerald, see if he's got any connections with MDOT to help us out with our road. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to Vintage Festival this weekend. It's always a great event, so thank you for your work on that. Wanted to give condolences to Tim Steenstra, the death of his sister last week, who was one of my son's favorite teachers, made his experience wonderful. So, she will be very, very missed. Also, the twenty-sixth, a lot of stuff's gonna be happening. JR's gonna be in charge of that meeting, because I will be gone. So, I'm sure he'll do a fine job. And I don't have anything else. There is a request to recess, to a closed session, to talk about the police department supervisor unit collective bargaining agreement, tentative agreement. So, after that closed session, we're gonna be coming into open session again? So, is there a motion to go into closed session for that purpose?
So moved.
Motion by Tim, support by Josh. Any other comments, questions? Kay, would you call the roll for that, please?
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
Mayor Moss?
Yes. So, thank you, everybody, for being here.